Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting is called to order at 3:59 PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Present.
Dr. Alhessen?
Present.
Mrs. Garza?
Present.
Ms. Stewart?
Present.
Mr. Critchfield?
Present. Tonight, we do not have requests addressing closed agenda items. And at this time, the board will adjourn to closed session and open session will resume at approximately 6:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. We now reconvene to open session at 6:05 PM to resume the regular order of business. Board Clerk Meyer Garza will provide an update on closed session topics.
Thank you, President Critchfield. Welcome, everyone. The topic discussed in closed session were student, sorry, anticipated litigation, labor negotiations, public employee discipline dismissal and release. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Replacement page for item 13.7 is on the back table. And tonight, we do have requests to address the board. While meetings of the governing board are not public meetings, they are open to the public. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. And the board will limit total time to 21 minutes as per Board by Law 9322.2. May I have Alyssa come on up to the podium? Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Hi. Okay, we were told by our middle school choir teacher that they were trying to get rid of the middle school music teachers. And he was, our eighth grade year was the year that we came back from COVID. So, and he was, he was a new teacher, too. So, he helped us through getting through a new school. And honestly, he paved the way for my music career and I know other music's, other people's music career. He built my confidence so much. It's just so sad to see that because the enrollment rates are not where people want them to be, that they have to get rid of these teachers. This is for Bellflower and Mayfair. At Bellflower, Mr. Montez and Mayfair, Jennifer. He was gonna wait to see us graduate, and now that they're trying to remove him, he won't get that chance. And it just, it hurts to see him go.
Superintendent Acevedo, do you have any update on that situation?
Yes, I'll make a statement about that during my comments.
Riley, come on down. Riley? Bueller? Nope, all right. We'll go back to it. Ivan? All right, you're up. Thank you for being here.
Oh, hello. First, I would like to thank everyone for being here. I just want to introduce myself. My name is Ivan Kurier. I grew up in Bellflower and I recently moved to Long Beach. But I've been a part of the Bellflower High, the Bellflower Unified School District for a long time, and I'm, my family still continues to be present in the district. Like Alyssa just mentioned, we heard regards about why we need to mobilize our students in our community to be out here, to speak on behalf of the vocal department. Personally, I grew up at Washington Elementary School. I sang as an elementary singer in the elementary ensemble. I didn't have the opportunity to sing in middle school because you know why? I decided to take Mandarin. And because these districts and these schools didn't give us the opportunity to do everything that we wanted. And maybe it was out of my control, maybe it was out of their control, but I had to pick between Mandarin and singing. One of my passions, one of the things that make me the happiest in the world. Luckily for me, though, I was able to join the Bellflower Vocal Ensemble in my later high school years. And let me tell you guys, that is one of the places where I learned to be my most, my most authentic and true self. There, we were allowed to build a community of singers, the people who were trying to help each other. There is where I became a true leader. In high school, I was the celebratoryian of the 2020 graduating class. I graduated with high accolades. I am going to graduate from UCLA in a, in a couple weeks with a double major. I am so excited and I can't say that, I can say firmly that I wouldn't be anywhere where I am today if it wasn't for singing. I sing hours and hours throughout the day. I sing when I'm nervous, I sing when I'm tired, I sing when I'm happy, I sing when I'm sad. And singing is just one of those things that has helped me to express myself and to, and not only does it help you to express yourself, it helps you to create a, it helps you to create this world and it helps you to create your mind in a path that helps to facilitate all aspects of your life. I'm graduating with a political science and Chicano Studies double major. I am working at the LA Federation of Labor, helping to unionize, hoping to organize over 300 unions. That's more than 800,000 plus members of LA County. But let me tell you, sing, you guys may think that singing and the vocal department and all these things are not beneficial or whatever to students' identities, but I need you to advocate for these students. I need you to make sure that they have the opportunity to sing. I need you to make sure that they have the opportunity to invest in themselves in places where they will not be able to. These are third place, these are their places for people to exist. If I didn't have this opportunity in my early education, I don't know if I would have ever been a singer. I wouldn't know, I don't know if I would have ever understood how to read music, how to properly identify chords, notes, any of that. I am a proud tenor and I will continue singing for the rest of my life. And I just need to say once that you guys need to advocate for these students and for these performing arts, because even though we think STEM and math and science and all those things are very important, it's also important that we feel the humanity in these students and that we allow for them to invest in themselves and to give them the opportunity to look into themselves and to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Up next, Sophia.
Hello. So, since 2020, everyday life in the United States has become more and more isolating, especially for youth. There are no more third spaces for youth. Their life is confined to school and the home. This lack of safe spaces for youth to develop key social and self-regulating skills pushes them to find community in other spaces. But what if that community doesn't exist? Schools have the potential to provide safe third spaces for students to develop themselves through the funding of extracurricular activities and programs like the choral department. Long hours spent on improving one's vocal skills, collaborating with classmates, practicing listening and persistence, these are environments that bring out resiliency and successful traits in our youth. It has been proven in study after study that participating in choir or singing programs increase self-esteem, boost confidence, promotes perseverance, and it can even support language development. These skills are not developed and used in an echo chamber. Rather, they can be translated and applied to all other aspects of academic engagement. There is value in teaching choir skills to the youth. There is value in investing in art education. Art is something that is innate to humanity, just as innate as collaboration and community building is. There is no justification warranted enough to take away this opportunity for youth who have a passion for singing. They deserve to have the opportunity to strengthen their social and self-regulating skills through art education. So, we don't want to hear that it's not within budget to fund this. And just since I have some time, some details on myself, I graduated 2019 while I wasn't personally involved in the choir department. I did see how it created such a wonderful environment for people to, to build these skills and for people to really, you know, find that power within themselves. And so, yeah, that's just a tidbit about myself and why am I stakeholder in the community? But yeah, gold bellflower, I guess.
Thank you, Sophia. Haley? Come on up to the podium. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. As you said, my name is Haley K. Tompkins. And thank you so much for holding this. As I said, my name is Haley Tompkins and I'm a proud alumni of Mayfair High School in the Bellflower Unified School District. Next fall, I will be entering my senior year at one of the best acting colleges in the country, Syracuse University, located in Syracuse, New York. And I will be finishing my Bachelor of Fine Arts in Acting and also in Public Communications as well. Not to brag, but throughout my time at Syracuse University, I have been a standout performer, having been the only female to be cast every semester. I've studied six months in London, England, and performed at the Shakespeare's Globe. And I am currently the president of the acting department at Syracuse University. All of these wonderful accomplishments are all due to the training that Bellflower Unified School District has provided me. Whether it was elementary chorus, middle school choirs, and high school show choir, and not even to mention the theater programs as well. When I moved city lines from Lakewood to Cerritos, my parents and I were determined to not put me into ABC School District, but to keep me in Bellflower because of the arts program that has made me into who I am, to keep me in the school district because of these programs that would later give me the career path and life that I have today. And I am one of many, as we've seen so far, who now find their careers because of these programs. To cut any of the art budgets or programs in this district would be a shame. The multiple teachers that I have had and the training and the teaching that they have given me has shaped me into who I am today. And they continue to still mentor me and say hello to me and check in on me, and they are one of the many teachers that are still a staple in my life. So, I say all this to say that if you were to rob any child or student of that, then that would be a disservice. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tompkins. Jet Ice Selena? Come on up. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you for having me. Yeah, I'm here to speak just about extracurriculars and just the choir department as a whole. Hi, my name is Jet Ice Selena and I'm an alumni of Mayfair High School. I hold a computer science degree from Cal State Long Beach, and I'm currently a software programmer specifically in website development. I'm here today to stress the importance of finding a middle school teacher to continue the Mayfair Middle School Choir Program. Without this program, not only will we lose a valuable opportunity for our students, but it introduces risk to the future of Mayfair's music program as a whole. You see, the middle school choir program is like the foundation for the high school music program. It's where students first get interested in music and learn the basics. Once they build this foundation, they can take the skills they've learned and apply it at a high school level. But it's not just about music. Being in the choir teaches kids skills like teamwork, communication, and discipline, skills they'll use in whatever path they choose. As a software developer myself, I can attest to the value of these soft skills in the professional world. They're essential for success in any career. I'm a product of the choir program at Mayfair Middle School and High School, and I just only wish to continue its longevity. It shaped me into the person I am today and laid the groundwork for my career. I won't, I want every student to have the same opportunity to grow and succeed. So, just want to say that obviously I'm not in the music industry or in anywhere in that career sense, but I have learned a lot of soft skills and a lot of camaraderie building and leadership skills, specifically from Ms. Holcomb. And I wouldn't be in the position that I am today if it weren't for that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jet. Gil Friedman, come on up to the podium. Thank you for being here, Gil. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, board members. My name is Gil Friedman. I am currently the freshman class president at Mayfair High School, and I am also a member in Showtime. And I'm here to bring to your attention how imperative it is that we have both middle school and high school choir directors. It would be a shame for these kids to lose the opportunity to show their talent. If you guys were able to see our district festival about two weeks ago, you see how much talent these kids have. And we wouldn't be able to do all of that if we don't have the proper knowledge and education. And with funding, like from Prop 28, we're wondering why we're cutting existing programs when we don't have to. The choir and all music in BUSD is the backbone of this district. It's always been amazing, and the only way it can continue to be amazing is if we have the proper staff for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Melissa Morales? Welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening and hello. My name is Melissa Morales. I am an alumni from Bellflower High, where I participated in both middle and high school choir. I'm concerned about the potential that this district will not be hiring a middle school choir teacher at the, at either Bellflower or Mayfair. As someone who went through both programs with Mr. Shu and Ms. Kelly, I can't even begin to explain what a tremendous impact both teachers and their programs had on me and so many others, as you've already heard this evening. Both of these jobs are a huge undertaking. There are field trips, tour, fundraising, planning and executing performances for both the community and school, on top of everything that a teacher typically does, such as lesson plan, grade, contact parents, counsel students, and so much more. Both programs will suffer with the lack of attention to the needs and differences each program requires, and the music teachers will suffer by asking them to do a two-person job. Additionally, you'll be negatively impacting one of our most beloved programs by our community and limiting access to a full, rich, and meaningful music education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. May I have Victoria Sanchez? Come on up to the podium. Welcome.
Hi, like I, you said, I am Victoria Sanchez. I am a proud Bellflower alumni. I graduated 2019. I am a current student at Cal State Long Beach. Though I am not in the music program, it has shaped me to the person that I am today. As a teenager, I could barely stand in a classroom. I could barely stand around people. It constructed a confidence in me that I would not have today. It has made me a leader. I am founding a club at my college, which is one thing that is hard to do, especially as a transfer student. I am proud to be an alumni of Bellflower High School, and it greatly saddens me that we're taking away these opportunities from students, an opportunity that I myself did not have in middle school. And I think about the person that I could be today had I had this opportunity. I think we are doing a great disservice to students by taking a program that can teach them how to become team leaders, how to become team members, and how to create confidence that I otherwise wouldn't have had without these teachers who had my back, teachers who are overworked but still had the time to talk to me at the end of the day, tell me how great I was doing, and who see me now and tell me, "Years ago, you would not have been able to stand here and talk to me face to face. Look at me in the eyes, but now you can." Removing these opportunities from students, which is a safe space, music obviously is a language that is universally known, taking away this language is detrimental. This program brings people together who otherwise would have not been together. I am not a music major. I'm a criminal justice student. As you see, all of us have different majors, but we all still know each other, that we are a community. We are still coming back, even though we are in different spaces now. Having the program available to middle schoolers, it helps them prepare for what the high school life is. I, being an lower-income student, was afforded opportunities I otherwise would have never been able to achieve had I not been in the choir program. We were able to perform in places such as Disneyland and Knott's, places that my parents could not even afford to take me over the summer. These are places that I was able to experience because of these programs and things that, like, I think I would have never been able to go to because my parents simply could not afford it. I think it also takes away jobs from people who need them. These are things that people are passionate about. Allowing them to share their passions is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. May I have Audrey Austria? Come on up. Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Hello, board members, parents, district staff, and attendees. My name is Audrey Austria, and I am a Bellflower High School alumni from the class of 2021. I'd like to share a bit of my journey with you all. I joined elementary ensemble in the sixth grade, then moved on to junior vocal ensemble in middle school under the direction of Mr. Shu. I very much loved and valued my time in our middle school ensemble, so I was inspired to continue my time in Bellflower to keep doing music. Oh, so sorry. I create so many memories because I had joined the middle school choir during my first years of attending BHS. I just don't think I would be where I am today if I didn't join. Just this past year, I coordinated and organized a whole night of cultural and modern performances in the arts for Philippine X Cultural Night at my college. If I did not receive so much guidance and wisdom from my time in the middle school vocal department, I truly don't think I would have had the courage to, and experience to do so. I can say with confidence that my time in the middle school vocal department has had an influence on my college career. I, myself, and many other alumni who went through the middle school music programs definitely don't regret our time in the arts. So, I hope our current and future students will not be deprived of these same opportunities. Thank you.
Have Comson to the, yeah, you knew. You knew. Thanks for being here. Welcome.
Hello, board. My name is Comson. I'm currently a student at California State University, Long Beach, and I'm studying electrical engineering. I just want to give a brief address to the extracurriculars at topic. So, I was notified about two hours ago, I'm a Bellflower High School alumni, being in both the music, both music departments, so band and choir. And so, I was notified two, about like a few hours ago, by my ex-choir director that the middle school music teachers' positions would be terminated. And from my understanding, are the high school positions still going to be there? Like, are they not affected?
That is a great question. We don't respond to questions, but I believe Ms. Acevedo is going to give an update during her report after this part.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, if we're just affecting, you know, the, the middle school music departments and we're taking those positions off, and we still have the high school departments, we're still indirectly affecting the high school music departments. Our music departments in the high school at Bellflower Unified School District are very successful. And so, if we care about the success of those students and the programs themselves, then it's in our best interest to keep the middle school programs. As stated before, the middle school programs are like feeder programs towards the high school programs. So, while students will still have opportunity to attend the high school programs, they won't be as experienced and as prepared for the high school programs, so they won't be as, as successful. Additionally, as stated before, the Proposition 28, which was passed recently, a few years ago, was passed specifically for funding high schools, well, high school and middle school band programs and music programs. So, it would be a misallocation of our funds that we have if we choose to not fund a middle school music program and those teachers. So, being involved for, since elementary school in music, I understand how important it is to have music involved within our students. Here in the music programs, it's like families. You get qualities that you can't obtain in any other program. Being in both the vocal and the band department, I can tell they're both very specific and very unique. So, even then, even within the music department, the programs are very unique, and taking these programs away or weakening these programs by taking out the middle school programs, it'll be a disjustice towards our students. So, I ask, if you really care about our students, I ask that you try your best to keep the middle school programs available. Thank you.
Thank you, Comson. May I have Mary Ordinario? Ordinario? Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mary Julie Ordinario, and I'm speaking on behalf of the music department as president of the 2023 Bellflower High School Vocal Ensemble. Having been part of the music department for all of my six years at Bellflower Middle and High School, it was disappointing to hear that there would no longer be any middle school music teachers as of next year. The music program at Bellflower was one of the closest communities I had on campus, providing me with some of the closest friends even after graduation. It is important to note that starting early on, will foster these close-knit communities in the way that it did with me. This early exposure to music learning and performance helped me discover my passion for music and also served as my creative outlet when I found myself too stressed to focus on other subjects such as maths and sciences. Many times, I found that being part of this extracurricular motivated me to attend class and excel, spreading the school spirit. The performances I had both on and off campus provided me with connections and experiences that I can't find anywhere else. These unforgettable experiences have allowed me to branch out in college as I pursue music performance as a major, and I hope that these same opportunities continue to be offered for other students with similar goals and values as me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ordinario. May I have Samantha Reese? Welcome and thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I have come to speak on the music department. In the beginning of joining middle school vocal choir, I would have never thought that the transformation I would have undergone would make such an impact in my life. When I first joined, music became more reading notes on a piece of paper and finding out the rhythms to a specific song. It became emotional, and it made me develop discipline as well as creativity and a family. These family members I now have are still with me here today, as well as speaking on this behalf. Through this program, I learned the value of perseverance and the joy of collaboration. Every practice session, every performance has taught me the importance of dedication and teamwork. Moreover, the music program was a sanctuary that I was able to build and create a voice for myself and build my confidence that I now have in my college education. It provided me a space to where I could connect with others on a deeper level rather than just having basic conversations. I am truly grateful for the opportunities that this program has created for me, and I hope that this is one that we continue to have for our middle school applicants. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Ayana Guharo? Come on up to the podium. Thank you for being here and welcome.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Ayana Guharo. Basically, I'm a proud alumni of Bellflower, and the middle school program definitely was the start of my confidence boost. It was definitely something that pushed me through the day, was so excited when that fifth period came around and it was music time. It was only the really, really the only thing I ever put effort into, honestly. And, um, so then, being able to grow from middle school to go into high school, to then meet new people, come closer to them was something I don't think I could ever live without. I don't think I would be the person I am today. And I still have family members that are within this program, and I currently have a little sister that's gonna be the president of the middle school choir, so who's gonna tell her that, "Never mind, you're not, new elective," you know? But definitely would be a disservice to take away this program and not be able to give these students the outlets that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone who spoke. And I want to make sure everyone gets a chance, is Riley back? Did Riley come? Hey, Riley, there you are. Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening, board members. My name is Riley Matias. I am currently a senior at Bellflower High School. To begin, the middle school, the middle school vocal program really did help me gain confidence in public speaking, as well as just performing in front of an audience. What, I would say, after coming back from COVID and the pandemic, being able to see, or being able to see as a sophomore how, how few people were in the vocal program was really disheartening, especially since I remember how fun it was back when I was, before the pandemic. And then, after a couple years, the middle school program has finally grown, and it doesn't feel like it's struggling. It feels honestly like it's actually thriving, especially after last, or a couple weeks ago, the district festival we had. I would say it would be very, very disappointing to see all the progress that has been made since the pandemic be just torn away. Additionally, my, or additionally, as a link crew leader, I have kids who applied, and I encourage them to audition for junior vocal. And it would be very, and it would be very sad to see them lose that opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Riley. Again, thank you, everyone who spoke tonight. We don't respond during this portion, but just know, we, like, like all of you, have questions. And I'm actually gonna turn it over to our superintendent. And Andrew, is it okay? Can we redo the order and just have superintendent message next so the students don't have to wait until that portion?
Yeah, you can modify the agenda if you'd like.
Great. Ms. Acevedo, is that okay?
Absolutely. So, I'm sorry. So, in response to the comments that were made this evening, just for clarification, there is no intention of closing the middle school or the high school choir program. There is no intention of doing that. I believe the confusion may be in the number of teachers within a program, and that's based on the number of students that request a course. So, there is no intention to close down either. So there is no intention to close down either one of those programs.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Azaveto. All right, we will now move on. Do we have any corrections to the evening's agenda, other than the one I just mentioned?
We have no corrections.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call Esther Lindstrom's interim elementary principal, Dr. Tiranie, to lead us in the flag salute and share an inspirational message. Welcome, Dr. Tiranie.
Welcome, everybody. If you guys can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You guys may be seated.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Babak Aminia Tiranie, or just Dr. Tiranie to make things a little bit easier. Today, I stand before you to celebrate the remarkable power of education and the profound impact our educators have on shaping the lives of our students. Education is more than transmission of knowledge. It is the key that unlocks the door to a world of possibilities. It empowers individuals to dream bigger, reach higher, and make meaningful contributions to society. Educators do more than teach academic subjects. They ignite passions, uncover hidden talents, and instill values that last a lifetime. An educator's belief in a student's profound, in the student's abilities can be the catalyst that propels a student to achieve greatness, often beyond their own expectations. Through their dedication and compassion, educators help students navigate the complexities of life, often offering wisdom and guidance every step of the way. And so we must recognize the ripple effect of an educator's influence. One inspired student can go on to inspire others, creating a chain reaction of positive change. And I stand before you today as an example of that type of chain reaction. I myself was a student of the Bellflower Unified School District. I attended both Ernie Pyle Elementary School and Bellflower Middle and High School. It was through the positive impact of my dedicated teachers at these sites that I strove to be the best that I could be. And with their help, I graduated as valedictorian from Bellflower Middle and High School in 2005, went on to gain my bachelor's and master's degree from UCLA, and I earned my doctoral degree from Cal State Long Beach. And by the way, all of my degrees were paid for via scholarships, all with the help of letters or recommendations that came from my high school teachers and administrators. The impact of my teachers have had a profound effect on who I am as an educator. In 2013, I was hired at Bellflower Middle and High School. After a few years, I took over AP Human Geography and AP Government, making learning interesting and exciting. Side note, many of the kids here are actually my previous students as well. So I had no idea they were going to be here, but it's happy to see them. I created Apex at Bellflower, a honors program meant to be, meant to help high-achieving students reach their full potential and then attend the most prestigious universities. And in my last year of teaching, I also became the College and Career Center Coordinator, assisting students with their post-secondary dreams. In 2022, I became an assistant principal at Bellflower Middle and High School, furthering my support to help students. And in mid-February this year, I took on the role of interim principal at Lindstrom Elementary School. And throughout this entire time, my goal as an educator has always been to inspire and work with students in a manner that my own great educators have done with me. I apologize if my list of accomplishments here appears as though I'm bragging about myself. It's not my intent. Rather, I'm trying to showcase myself as an example of what an education in Bellflower Unified School District can provide. And I hope that I have conveyed to you all the power that educators can have on our students. As a final example, last night, I visited the senior awards ceremony at Bellflower Middle and High School and witnessed the accomplishments of many of the students that I used to work with there. This past Monday, graduating seniors from Mayfair High School visited my Lindstrom campus and spoke with my students about their future plans and provided my little ones with some words of wisdom. And in these moments, I am again reminded that educators are the architects of students' futures, shaping not just individual lives, but the very fabric of our society. In closing, let us celebrate the transformative power of education and the extraordinary impact of our educators. Let us ensure they have the resources, training, and respect they deserve for their work is invaluable. Collectively, we can create an environment where every student has the opportunity to thrive and where every educator is empowered to make a lasting difference. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tiranie. A little bit of a flex there, a little bragging, but well-deserved. Thank you for all the work that you do. And you're always, you're always great at every event, and a great principal over at Lindstrom. I appreciate you. Tonight, we do not have communication report from BTA, CSEA, or PTA. And now it is time for superintendent report. Ms. Azaveto.
Thank you. So this evening, I'd like to share my appreciation for our classified employees. We often say that our classified employees are the backbone of our district. Without them, the organization would fail. It's a true statement. How would we educate our students if we were unable to get them to school, to provide them a safe, clean campus, or assist them when they're ill, or provide them nutrition, amongst other things? It takes a large classified staff to support our certificated and administrative team. This week, we celebrate them. I want them to know that they're appreciated and respected members of our BUSD team. On another note, our seniors are preparing for graduation. We're getting close to the date, and up on the screen, you'll see some pictures. This has been a very fun week of both middle school and senior awards. I'd like to highlight one of our instructors at Bellflower High School, Erica Alfaro. Erica and her students created T-shirts for each senior for the senior celebration breakfast this morning. Each student received a unique T-shirt. The shirt stated "College Bound Buccaneer", with the logo of the college that the student has committed to. Thank you to Ms. Alfaro for making the breakfast even more special for our students. This weekend is our last holiday weekend for the 23-24 school year, so please enjoy the holiday and our few last days of the school year together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azaveto. And I think that's the first time I've seen a slideshow during a superintendent report.
Did you like that?
I did. I liked it. I said we keep it going.
Okay.
All right, we, next, we have discussion item. And before we move on to discussion item, the board will be taking a five-minute recess, and we will be back at approximately 6:48. Thank you. Welcome back. We will now reconvene in open session at 6:48. Up next are discussion items. We have two discussion items this evening on 10.1, review of the proposed LCAP 24-25 Local Control Accountability, and 10.2, review of the 24-25 Local Control Funding Formula Proposed Budget 24-25. Ms. Azaveto.
Before we dive into the two discussion items, I'd like to remind everyone that this evening, we'll be reviewing both items within the LCAP template for discussion and collaboration. Our intention tonight is to do a deep dive of the components of the LCAP and the budget supporting the LCAP in detail prior to bringing you the draft in June. The goals and actions we'll be reviewing tonight are supported by the budget document found in discussion item 10.2 and have been embedded in this draft for discussion. We will not be doing two separate presentations since both items have been embedded for you. Our associate superintendent, Sulema Holgin, and fiscal director, George Martinez, are here to help support any budget questions you may have while going through the LCAP template with our assistant superintendent, Bonnie Carter. During the special board meeting in June, you'll be provided with two formal presentations. One will be of the updated draft LCAP template, and the second will be of the updated proposed budget. Tonight's document is considered a working draft. For the audience, we have the LCAP with the proposed funding for view on the screens. We also have paper copies on the back table for those who may want to follow along with the paper copy. And at this point, I'm going to turn over the LCAP discussion to Mrs. Carter, who will present the draft to you tonight.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to start by laying the foundation for the information that you'll be reviewing this evening. Over the course of the year, we have been meeting with our educational partners to review the current LCAP and data as part of the new LCAP development process. This slide shows the most current timeline of events. During spring, committees had an opportunity to identify priority areas or areas of focus for next year. Part of this process also included review of feedback received from the different educational partners, as each group provides input influenced by their lens or their role within our educational system. Sometimes priorities from educational partners do not align, so some meeting time with the teams was dedicated for reviewing and identifying priority themes. This information was utilized to develop the draft LCAP we will be reviewing this evening. Tonight is another opportunity for the board to provide input during this development process. In June, the final LCAP will be presented to the board for review and adoption. The following information is shared with educational partners to set the stage for understanding the purpose of the LCAP and basic requirements. Annually, districts receive local control funding. Districts receive base funding and supplemental and concentration funding based on the total percent of unduplicated students. Unduplicated students include students that are English learners, foster youth, or low income. BUSD currently has 81% of their students that are unduplicated. Since BUSD has more than 55% of students that are unduplicated, BUSD does receive both supplemental and concentration funding. When the governor signed the LCFF law in 2013, part of the law included having an accountability system. As the implementation of this law changed the way that districts are funded and provided for more flexibility to districts on how to allocate funds. Therefore, districts are required to develop a plan for allocating LCFF funds, and a California school dashboard was created to help monitor progress schools and districts are making as one way to identify whether the funds are, as they're allocated, are making an impact for student success. It's important to keep in mind, as I'm going through the LCAP this, tonight, that there have been changes and continue to be changes with the LCAP template that I'll be highlighting as more accountability has been increased in how we're able to spend our funds as the years have gone on since 2013. At the base level, the LCAP must include goals, actions, and related expenses, must include services targeted to each major student group, and must include the eight state priorities. A high-level overview of the draft LCAP shows that the goals are aligned to BUSD's core values, which you'll see on the top of this slide, equity, achievement, and community. And they are also attached to the state priorities, which you'll see underneath. The goals are in blue across the middle. So before I get started tonight, I just wanted to lay that foundation and that timeline. I want to acclimate us to the folder that we have in front of us, because that's what I'm going to be going through. You have two tabs. The first tab is the annual update, and the second tab is the LCAP itself. And the third tab is the metrics. The metrics are exactly the same as in the LCAP. We just took them out and put them on one page for you, so it was easy to look at. As we're going through the annual update and the LCAP, I'm going to go through a couple at a time, so please stop me if you get lost in which document I'm in. I'll try to keep you aligned with me. First thing to note is that our annual update, it's separate this time, and it's in two separate tabs. Typically, when you see it, it's connected with the LCAP. And the reason that it's separated is because we have a new three-year LCAP. Typically, it's included. So when you do look at the LCAP, and I'll re-highlight it once we go page by page, you'll see an annual update section in the LCAP, but it's going to say "not applicable" because we have the separate document. Okay? So again, please stop me if there's any confusion. We did lay this out with a table of contents for you, so I will be talking about letters. It is no different than what was posted online. We did it that way so we could keep the page numbers the same in case you already had questions that you might have thought of while you were reviewing it prior to tonight. Okay, so let's start with the annual update. I'm on page one. So as I mentioned, this annual update, the purpose of this document is to show the metrics that we determined three years prior to the LCAP that we're ending right now. So it is important for you to keep in mind that the baseline that we have listed here was pre-COVID. And then what happens is you've got a year one, a year two, and a year three, and then a desired outcome. So when we get to the LCAP itself, you'll see that we'll have a metric, a baseline, a desired outcome, but there will not be year one, year two, or year three, because it's the new document. So this document shows you the baseline and how we fared in each one of those metrics. As I mentioned, it was prior to COVID when the baseline was created. So some of the metrics, when we look at, were they effective, were they not effective? Did we meet the mark? We have to think about changes that might have happened because of COVID. I'll give you an example of chronic absenteeism. It's the easiest example to give. We were at about 9.4 after COVID. We were in the 30s, about, I think, 30.4, somewhere around there. We were hoping to decline, so we were hoping to get to about 7%, which would have been our desired outcome. And we, there was no way for us to go from 30 to 7 in the time that we had. So when we looked at the metrics, we look at, did we improve since COVID? So when I'm looking at these, I'm looking at, did we meet our desired outcome? Or did we improve from COVID? Did we maintain? So were we close, didn't go really up or down? Or did we not meet? Overall, when you look at all of the metrics combined, 80% of the metrics that we did have in our annual update were either met, improved, or maintained. So I'm not going to go through each metric. You'll see that we're in goal one first, and these were all the metrics, and it goes through about page three. At page three, you'll see something that starts off with goal analysis, and there are four questions there. And what we do in that section is we look to see, were there any substantive differences in the goals, in the actions that we had? Did they change in any way? And there were none, no substantial differences. The next is material differences and budget expenditures as well. And so that's what we describe in that area. The next box is an explanation of how effective the, the goal was. And so you can see in the beginning of that, that is where I talked about the COVID explanation. And then the fourth is any changes made to the planned goals. So for each goal that we have, we lay that out, and then this document just repeats itself with goal two and goal three. We only had three goals in our current LCAP. So the changes that are made and the effectiveness of the LCAP is also in part of the LCAP. So I'm going to sort of take us from the annual update and jump us into the LCAP, because you'll see similar things. It's, sometimes it's almost a copy paste. They're going to take the presentation down and bring up the LCAP so that you can see it on the screens. We do have extra copies off to the side as well. Okay, so let's move to the LCAP tab. Starting on page one, the LCAP has some basic summary information. And this is basically the demographics of our district. Moving on to page two, in paragraph B, you'll see that there are our core values. Our core values have remained the same. Critical components is the next paragraph there, paragraph C. And that's really talking about the critical things that we have in our LCAP that we believe are important for us to continue to focus on. And those are things like implementation of the standards, interventions, PLCs, or professional learning communities. When you go down towards the bottom, you're going to see that there's a very brief description of each goal there as well. So starting with D, where it says goal one, it explains some of the highlights of that goal. And that's our safe collaborative goal. So it does talk about engagement and climate, professional learning communities in that goal. Goal two is more of our instructional goal, and that has a brief description there, how we strive for a guaranteed and viable curriculum, data-driven, decision-making. we strive for a guaranteed and viable curriculum, data-driven decisions, and instructional practices, effective instruction. And also, this is where college and career supports are included as well. And then goal three is our parent and communication with communities. So opportunities to work with partner advocates. The next section is the district LCAP, continuing their main initiatives. And those main initiatives are listed there. And then F is the priority areas for 24, 25. So goal one, actions five, four, and nine, those are priority areas, improving facilities and support and safety. And goal two, actions seven and three are high priority areas, professional development, technology integration, early literacy supports, college career options and pathways. And goal three, action two and one, increased site-based communication with parents and parent learning opportunities. On page four, this is where we start with the annual performance. This is a new area to our LCAP. And it starts off with local data that shows the, that talks about our baseline goals and how we're performing as a school district. The newer area is that we're required to highlight any areas of our student groups or indicators or schools that are red on the dashboard. So when you're looking at the second paragraph under annual performance, it starts with of the six indicators. That's where, when I talk about red, that's the dashboard. Earlier, I said because of LCFF, the governor, the law said that they needed an accountability measure. The dashboard is our accountability measure. One of the increased pieces of accountability is with the new LCAP template, we are required to highlight those schools and student groups that fall in the red area. That is the lowest category of performance on our dashboard. So in that second paragraph, you'll be able to see that of the six indicators on the dashboard, there were no indicators for the district that were in the red. However, we did have some schools that did have indicators in the red, and they're listed there. The next paragraph, the third paragraph under annual performance is where we highlight the student groups that we had in red. The next paragraph, where it starts with five schools, this is where it starts to delineate by indicator. So for the suspension indicator, it, we are required to list the schools and the student groups that are in the red. Going to page five, it shows that chronic absenteeism is next. Seven schools are listed in this area that have student groups in the red. The next paragraph is English learners, the next is math, and then college career. So this change is due to the fact that we do need to look at why our students are in the red, why our schools are in the red, and help provide that support for them, and then prioritize them for support in our goals and actions. So later on, when we get to our goals and actions, you'll notice that we're not necessarily highlighting the, the schools in there, because we've already done that once, so we're not going to belabor the point. But for example, the very top paragraph on this page, where at the end it says goal one, action six, this is the goal and the action that is going to support and prioritize the schools that are in this area. The next section, reflections on technical assistance, this is also new. We are in differentiated insistence as a district, and this delineates how we are in differentiated assistance. We're in it for a different reason than we were previously. We were in it for chronic absenteeism and suspension rate for certain student groups. We're in it more now for English language arts and math, for our English learners and our students with disabilities. The bottom of that section says comprehensive support and improvement. We do not have any schools that are in comprehensive support and improvement. If we did, we'd be required to put them there. Page six, this is where we delineate out our educational partners and the opportunities we had to work with them and hear from them and receive input from them to build our LCAP. You'll notice at the bottom, so let's go to page seven, you'll notice at the bottom of the parent education or the educational partner section there, you'll see something that's called the equity multiplier sites, and that is new funding that was provided to certain sites that have a high instability rate. So Los Flores, Somerset, and our Bay Center do receive or will receive equity multiplier funds, and their requirement was to meet with their communities and discuss what they might utilize those funds for. And then our requirement is to add a goal for that, and you'll see that. So our new LCAP doesn't just have three goals, now it has four. The next section, in the middle of that paragraph, where it says a description of the adopted LCAP, this is how the LCAP changed, based on the influence from our educational partners. And so this is the section that you'll also see in the annual update. And you'll see this throughout the LCAP. So that first section is mostly about goal one and the additions that are made to the LCAP, and that's technology focus and professional development and collaboration, mental health services, analyzing them, and strategically looking at providing them in a tiered system and centralizing behavior supports, and providing instructional support. This is a new goal or new action. We'll share that for early grades to support literacy and math improvement. Okay? And the next section, it talks about in goal, in goal two, some, an additional metric has been added. Curriculum specialists are part of this goal as well to support with instructional materials, development and professional development, and onsite support as requested. Yes, sir.
Which, which?
I'm on the second paragraph under a description of how, so.
Which page number?
Page seven.
We're still on seven? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
In that goal, there is some release time for counselors. We'll continue that for them to work on their counseling program. And implementation will continue with the intervention screen as well, and maintaining CTE and Avid supports. On page eight, some additions are the possibility of increased support for the Language Assessment Center, continuing to implement our website and refine it, because it is new. And then we are updating our metrics for social media as well, and emphasizing continuation and increase of parent workshops. So it's really just a high-level overview of some of the changes that are within the LCAP. I'm still on page eight, and I'm just going to give you sort of some structural guideposts, because it repeats itself over the next four goals. So basically, you'll have the description of the goal. I'm in the middle there, where it says goal one, BUSD will provide all students with a safe collaborative conditions of learning. Underneath that are the state priorities. Underneath that is a brief description of the goal itself, and then below that is where the metrics start. So this is how I mentioned earlier that the metrics, now you're seeing a metric, you're seeing a baseline, but you're not seeing a year one or a year two. They also changed their LCAP to not say year three and then desired outcome. Now you've got target for year three outcome, and then they're going to be asking a current difference from baseline. So that's a change for the future LCAP. So as you go through the metrics, I'm on page nine now. Most of them are the same, and a good majority of them are required. But there are additions that we made and our own local metrics that we put in as well. So if you look at number 13 on page nine, that is not a new metric, but a changed metric. We used to look at PBIS implementation. We use a survey called the Tiered Fidelity Inventory, and we looked at it as a whole in wanting to identify implementation of PBIS. Now we're looking at it in tiers, because PBIS has three different tiers. We felt that it was more accurate and would give us more information if we looked at how fully implemented each tier was. Page 10. For chronic absenteeism, we did add, sorry, number 17. For chronic absenteeism, we did add a couple of our student groups, because they were rather high, and we want to take a look. At, at first glance, the, they are high, because they are a small population, but we still need to look at what we can do to support that population. Metric 18 is access and enrollment. It's priority seven. It's, it's a new metric, but not necessarily new. It's one that we typically put in our local indicators presentation to you, which will happen in June. And it really looks at the enrollment of students in our CTE and our sort of extra courses to see if there's any disproportionality with their overall enrollment. Page nine, I'm sorry, metric 19 is not necessarily a new metric. It's a metric that we met last, or in the last LCAP, but it was in goal two. We added it to goal one this year, because we did add an action to provide supports for our early learners, so we felt it was more appropriate to be there. Starting on the bottom of page 10 is where it says goal analysis. This is the part where I told you earlier that it's going to say not applicable, because this will be our annual update as we move along. And starting on page 11 are our actions for goal one, and you'll see a note there that we do have funding attached. It is preliminary, and so we wanted to make sure that we had that note there. We're continuing to receive our budgets, and so that number will change as you guys see different drafts of the LCAP. So I just wanted to let you know that it will change. So just to acclimate to you to what the actions are, nothing much has changed here. You've got the title, the description, total funds, and whether it's contributing or not. Contributing, meaning whether it is increasing or improving services for our unduplicated students, or our English learners, foster youth, or students that are socio-economically disadvantaged. So if it says yes, then that action supports that. If it says no, then it's more than likely a general fund expense and not part contributing. Page 12, action two, you can see that's the additional support for our early literacy. And there aren't any major changes, really. I do want to bring your attention to action six, where it talks about seven schools with student groups. This is part of what was added into the LCAP as far as prioritizing the, the areas and schools that are in the red. So again, not going to delineate them, they're in a different section, but are going to sort of call them out. And action seven, you're going to see the addition of long-term English learners. We did highlight and will be prioritizing our long-time English learners. It's not that we hadn't in the past, it's just a new requirement of the LCAP to call out our students that are long-term, so that we make sure that we are supporting them in getting towards that reclassification. And action eight, there is an addition in there for educational options. We are looking at possibilities for supporting our students that may be behaviorally changed or challenged or need that support and some educational options. Page 13. We are continuing our professional learning communities. There is an addition in here as far as our differentiated assistance and what we are doing to continue to ensure that we can exit differentiated insistence. And one of those things is to continue with the progress reports that we started earlier this year. You know them better as the quarterly reports. And so we are continuing, our school sites have their action plans, their PLCs are making commitments, and they're continuing to monitor improvement at the school site level. Okay, so starting on page 14, this is, goal two starts there. And the metrics are on page 15. There was a change in a metric here. There was a metric that we had in our LCAP that called out PLC implementation. We used a survey to identify that implementation. However, we felt the way that it was administered wasn't giving us accurate information, and so we modified that metric to include a walkthrough tool that our school sites do utilize. We have one school site that actually has teacher groups that use the walkthrough tool, and so that's the second part of that metric, that we have one of 14 schools conducting that. So if that is an additional support that our school sites are willing to do, then that number will increase. The ultimate with walkthroughs is that we do eventually get to teachers walking through classrooms of each other, because that's when the high levels of collaboration happen. Page 16. There was an addition of NWEA benchmark scores here and achievement scores. That was not in our previous LCAP, and so we felt that it was important for us to include it, so that we had a monitoring piece towards our state testing time. And then metric 12 on page 16 was, is a metric for CCGI, which is the system that we use that supports students with learning about college. So counselors can use that program to provide lessons or provide presentations to students, even to parents as well. Students can go on that system and research colleges, research careers. And so one of the metrics that we're looking at, or that we're adding in there is the percentage of students that completed the Interest Profiler Survey. So that's determining what their interests are, so that they can take next steps in investigating their future careers. Page 17. We did add a metric, metric 13. We added the F rate for our secondary schools as a way to just monitor the amount of students that are receiving at least one F in that final semester grades, so that we can dig in to see what the reasoning for that might be. Goal for, or action, I'm sorry, metric 14, there was an addition of our English learners, because we do monitor our UCCSU requirements, but felt it was important to also monitor our English learners' success with that requirement as well. And then action, metric 21 is an additional metric for internships and simulated work-based learning. So that is an addition for this year, for this LCAP as well. Page 19 starts the actions for goal two. When you look at action three, you are going to see that there was a change in our foundational literacy to highlight explicit systematic structured literacy versus looking at word study itself. We felt that that language wasn't inclusive of everything that foundational literacy is addressing, and so we wanted to make sure that that was changed. And the importance of that teaching is that it is explicit and systematic. So we wanted to make sure that that was included. We also are including our LTLS in this section as well. As you move through the pages, you're going to continue to see the actions. Our final action is for our dual immersion program, and it does merely say maintain our dual immersion program, but we are looking at that and are looking at feedback as far as whether that should be built out to include actions as well. Goal three starts on page Goal Three starts on page 22. And these are the metrics for our engagement goal, communication. And we did add an Instagram, social media, and website analytic to these metrics so that, and we did remove the Facebook. Not that we're not going to do Facebook in the future, just we met our goal. And so we changed it to Instagram and our website analytics. Page 25 starts the actions for Goal Three. And on page 26 is Goal Four. This is the goal that I talked about earlier. It is our new goal. It is only for certain schools and it's how the schools are determining to use their equity multiplier funds. So after they spoke with their communities and made that determination, we included it in our LCAP. And then we have some metrics that we're going to be looking at to see if the actions that they're putting in place are going to be successful. Those actions start on page 28. On page 29 is the beginning of our increased and improved services section. This section is different than it was in our previous LCAP because it used to be mostly narrative. So now they've basically broken it up into a table and you can see the goal and action that is an increased and improved service for the identified need of the students, how it's going to address that need, and then the metric that we're going to utilize to see if it was effective or not. And that continues to page 31. And then on page 32 is additional concentration grant funding. Because we have a high percentage of unduplicated students, we do receive additional funding. And so that section there highlights, you're basically supposed to say if any schools are over, or you know, are over a certain amount, that you're supposed to put them in there. All of our schools meet the threshold. And so they are all listed there with their unduplicated funding. And then part of that talks about the add-on funds being for the additional aids for their early literacy piece and increased administrative and behavior supports. And that is the end of the LCAP changes and the template itself.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Great job as always. Now I'll open it up to questions from the board. You have questions?
Oh, I apologize. I do have, before you go on to questions, do you have the clicker? Real quick. If you go to your last section, I think it's important for you to know how the LCAP is going to be adopted, just so you have the full vision. And then I'd be more than happy to answer the questions. It's not on the screen right now, but it is in the handouts. And it's basically a timeline that talks about the LCAP approval process. And it's starting moving forward. So the first part, I talked to you about spring. Now we're moving past today. It doesn't matter. It just needs to be at the last. Yeah, there you go. So what happens next is we're getting input for the LCAP. And then what will need to happen is we'll need to post it for our public to be able to look at as well. So you'll see May 31st, that's when it will go out to a revised version of it. Will go out to the public for written comments. I'll have the ability to do that. It'll go out on the BUSD news. June 13th and 20th, you already know, will be coming back to you. The 13th will be a special meeting. The 20th would then be the approval time. After that, we have five days to submit it to LACO. So we do make that submission. And then they have until August 15th to actually ask for clarifications or approve the LCAP itself. So they could ask for clarifications. If they do so, we have 15 days to respond. They then have 15 days to provide recommendations based off of our response of amendments to be made. If we do receive that letter, then we have 15 days to come back to you as a board and for you to consider those recommendations in a public hearing. And from that, they have until October 8th to approve the LCAP. So that is the timeline. Sorry to interrupt you. You are more than happy to ask questions now.
No, thank you for that. Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
I had a question on page 32. I know it says that we're going to provide early literacy and math support with the additional instructional aids. And it also says additional administrative and behavior support. What does that look like?
As far as the additional support in the primary grades for TK Two, our intention will be over time to try to provide instructional personnel, so IA support in those classes specific to ELA and math. So during their language arts and math time in the classroom.
And then the administrative support?
I believe if I can have Bonnie jump in at that particular point, but what we're talking about at the elementary level is additional support for assistant principals.
I like that idea. I know it's something that I would like to talk about is adding either a principal or assistant principal at the middle schools. We've talked a lot about the seventh through 12th. We've talked a lot about how that looks. And I just really feel like that being their own entity. So I don't know if the board, you know, how you guys feel about that, but I really think giving them additional administrative support as well, not just the elementary, would be a great idea and maybe something that you guys could look at. I don't know how this works if we talk.
And the crowd goes wild. I would be agreeable to that as well.
I agree.
Ms. Armstrong?
Thank you, President Crichfield. I had kind of like the same question because right now we're really moving a lot of staff around. Are we really going to have the positions filled that we need to implement what is proposed?
Are you referring to the instructional aids, for example, that I was just mentioning?
Well, shoot the, I'm talking, I'm talking about all of it inclusively, you know, for all of the goals because we're moving people, we're putting teachers back in a classroom, teaching, you know?
So for every position we're interested in filling, there's a whole process that we would go through with personnel to be able to establish those positions and then go through hiring for the position.
And we do have the resources to support the positions that we need.
Well, what you're looking at right now is LCAP. Those are proposed actions with the resources next to it. So what you're looking at is a proposal of if we chose to move forward with these goals, that's the proposed budget that would support that particular goal.
Thank you so much. And I like the way you, it was highlighted, what the unduplicated students would get. But when those answers were no, the unduplicated students still benefit because that's a general thing, right? Because?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so are we going to be able to, because I know we get funding for that, are we going to be able to really see funds being our unduplicated students just to make sure that they are, you know, receiving those funds and those benefits? You know, to try to, you know, to, for them to benefit just as, just as much. Because we're talking foster youth, you know, the low income and we want them to have just as much as the, our regular students who are not in those groups.
Right. And the funding for the unduplicated students, that's going to come down to us monitoring that as well, right? And ensuring that our students are receiving that benefit. It is important to note that we do have schools that 91% of their students are unduplicated. So quite a few of our students would be receiving that, those services. We have a very high number, even at the district, we're at 81%. But yes, we look at targeting and seeing, and that's why we have the different disaggregation of metrics there so that we can see, okay, how are our English learners doing? How are our socioeconomically disadvantaged students doing depending on who has that need?
And then when we go to evaluate ourselves, well, you know how our principals did that little study? Well, our principals, and I think they were really proud that they, they understood, you know, their data. So, you know, I just want to make sure that they understand that data too, you know, and so that they can share that because that would be fabulous news to know that, hey, we are meeting the needs of all of our students, even the most vulnerable ones.
Absolutely. And we actually had our principals do their spring presentations. We didn't bring them to board, but Ms. Azavado did have them come to our principal meeting and they shared presentations with all of us. So we're continuing that practice so that we can continue to be data-driven.
Thank you so much. Fabulous.
Thank you, Board Member Armstrong. Madam Clerk Garza.
Thank you, President Crichfield. I'm going to start off with a question on page eight, please. It is Language Assessment Center. Can you tell me a little bit more, what services do they provide for the district?
So our Language Assessment Center is where our students and families would go when they are enrolling and are identified as an English learner, a student. So that center actually oversees LPAC testing and trains teachers for that, but also goes out and supports the testing, also provides services, translation and interpretation services. And then, like I said, is that first, not first person, because the first person is our school site who builds that community with them, but they do the initial assessments as well. So they are referred to the assessment center for that.
Thank you. Are, I mean, I'm assuming that all the people who work in this department are bilingual, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. If we can go now to page six, engaging educational partners. Could you tell me where in these groups of educational partners did you actually include DI parents that have EL learners in our program?
Our goal for our parent advisory committee who meets with our district advisory group is to have a wide variety of parents. So we do ask each school site to provide a parent to participate. So that is where our DI parents would participate or through the LCAP survey, which is actually sent out to everyone.
Do you happen to know which, how many parents, percentage of those DI parents have EL learners though?
Not off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay. I'm, what I'm kind of struggling with here is that we have a program in our district that is bringing in kids, one of the very few programs, along with our, you know, CalAps group. Yet in these metrics, I don't see anything that is going to really benefit them or move them along. How are we supposed to know how our ELs are doing within those programs?
If I'm hearing you correctly, and correct me if I'm getting you wrong, but you're asking, are there, are there metrics that could be added for our dual immersion population?
Yes, because to just translate the metrics from our EO programs over to a DI program is incorrect. They are not supposed to be translations. They are really supposed to be adaptations and modifications, just kind of like what you would do with a specialized program, which is special education. You just don't give them those standards. You have to adapt them as well. Modifications are used. So I'm wondering, we have them on here, but there's nothing to really measure. And I would really love to see something that calls out that they are not just translations. They are not just the second thought and that hopefully we go forward with that in mind. It's really important. And it's not just because we're building bilingual students, but it is because sometimes in these programs, we lose our EL students. So we have, you know, that in our LCAP as one of our goals, but I'm struggling to see how we are going to follow them along.
And if I can just clarify so, because it is input that we're receiving, correct? We have our biliteracy, but that's not enough. What I'm hearing you say is addition of metrics for our DI students, which may come in the vein of how are they doing with their Spanish development as well, right? And so I just wanted to say that out loud to make sure I was getting you right.
Yes. And also if we could maybe think about, I'm not sure exactly, board, how we would do this, but there really needs to be someone very specific who understands how to build a second language within our admin. And I'm not sure, if I'm incorrect, please let me know. Do we have anybody on our staff here at the district office who knows how to build a second language? Not just as a bilingual, you know, staff member that understands how to build it? What is the progression and where does it change for these students?
We don't currently have a dual immersion TOSA or a dual immersion administrator, if that's, I believe that's what you're asking. We do not currently have that. The dual immersion program is layered within our state and federal program.
So I, if we could possibly just think about that, colleagues, because it is a program who will benefit us in our numbers with our kids. And for us to not even place anything on here, I'm sorry, but this is unacceptable. We should have some type of options for them. So I'm really looking forward to when we go back and we look at this, that some thought has been given, you know, with regards as to how are we going to be making this a better program for our kids? Because everybody has ELS and they're all our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. When is the next time we see, it's the June?
The next time that it will be going out is May 31st. So there'll be additional revisions on May 31st.
Okay. Dr. O'Hesson?
Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie, for the great report. My main concern is the chronic absenteeism. And I see on page 30 that we've singled out foster youth, but it's a much broader picture. And one of my, what I've been hearing among teachers is that students will not be attending like a math class or an English class for like two months. They're on site. They're just not going to class. I'm concerned about that. And that's something that is not only the responsibility of the teachers reporting it, but also the site principal making sure that students aren't wandering the sites and not going to class. And so part of that is also considered chronic absenteeism when they're not showing up to class, even though they're at school?
Well, they would be, they'd be truant if they had the absences, right? And so it would be part of their chronic absenteeism. But I think what I'm hearing you say is a metric for that and focusing in on our attendance procedures.
Right. Because I'm concerned that, you know, a teacher, security would see a student out. What are you doing out? Why aren't you in class? Get to class type of thing. It's unfortunate we have to do that, but that's important. And then a student shows up to class and says, what have I missed? Two months later. And asking for the teacher to give them notes or to coach them then for what they missed. So, you know, this particular case, I think the student's going to be going to Somerset. But I gave you that example because I wanted to clarify, is absentee also considered even though they're on site, but they're not going to class?
Yeah, I mean, it depends, right? I mean, if they're, if they're marked absent in class, then that's going to impact them. If they came to class and they decided that they wanted to use the restroom and they're gone for 20 minutes, that's a different story.
Right, right. So when it impacts academic performance and it impacts a student actually completing their credits or even passing the class, that's my concern when I'm seeing that happening across the board. So I think that's really. So I think that's really important that we look at how we measure it, how can we deal with it? What are some proactive measures that we can support the student with? They don't like English, they don't like math, they don't like science, okay? But there are some things that we can support them, or their counselors can be working with them, to identify what is it they do like and how to tailor that particular course or subject to support them. And also, we're looking at not only foster youth, but also, I know the highest is other demographic groups and also our students with disabilities.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hussen. Vice President Stewart?
Thank you. I would like to actually invite Board Member Garza into this part of the conversation because this is not my specialty, but a lot of things I hear about DI is our middle school program, our seventh and eighth grade, that there's not a lot of classes. They basically take a history class. And so I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can add in for DI as far as like middle school, or even if we've thought of ILC being like a K-8 school to get them more language? I don't know, maybe you could add on to that, but I know I hear that from our community quite often.
That's actually correct. A lot of our students, again, who are identified ELs within that program, don't always re, what's the word I'm looking for?
Reclassify?
Reclassify, thank you. So they end up not having the opportunity to take those extra classes that everybody else does. They're stuck in one class that will help them reclassify them. But to not be able to give them these supports ahead of time, I don't think that we're meeting our goals with this population of students. Having a K-8, K-8 school is prob, for DI only, is probably a really good place to start. Because we could be able to see that progression on one campus and give them those supports.
I don't know how we talk about that or what we do, you know what I mean? I'm just throwing things out here that I've heard and ideas.
So let me just clarify. You're interested in looking at possibly having a TK-8 site and possibly at the ILC, maybe to address some of the DI concerns? Am I hearing that correctly? So the interest is looking into investigating, what would that take? What would that look like?
Yes, I guess so, yes.
Okay.
I don't even know if that is just on the LCAP or just in general, you know what I mean? But we're talking about it, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Correct. And that was what I was going to add as well, is that when we're talking about creating a school and those kinds of things, it is going to be a longer-term kind of thing. So it's really, as Ms. Azaveto was saying, is an investigation into those pieces. But that's, we're just taking your input today, and so we appreciate that. I did want to clarify as well, I know the reclassification of our DI students definitely was a concern. One of the things that does support it is, for students reclassifying, is our move to the eight-block day. And so that is providing them the opportunity to take other electives or take another class if they are still required to take ELD during their middle school time. But I did hear what you guys were talking about as well.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. And thank you, Vice President Stewart. Ms. Armstrong?
Thank you. I just have two questions. We are, we're still experiencing a decline in enrollment, am I correct?
Yes.
And have you all considered how this might affect us being able to implement this? Especially, you know, I talked about positions, you know, earlier. You consider declining enrollment?
Sure. And I think, and Ms. Azaveto can correct me or add in, and Ms. Holguin as well, I think what you're saying is with declining enrollment comes less money, and will we be able to continue these efforts as we move down the road?
Yes. Yeah. Ms. Armstrong, that's always a concern. That's why sometimes you may see staff hired based on a particular time period for a particular funding source. We also look at long-term, what is the impact if you're hiring particular employees in particular positions? What does that look like long-term? So that is part of the consideration.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing, just to, just a question just came up from when Dr. Sue was speaking, when she was talking about absenteeism. Absenteeism. Okay. Do we still have those classes to where students are late and they're not admitted into the classroom? And if we do, how is that going to affect the, you know, the children being counted or even, you know, being allowed to get into that class so that they can get their lesson?
So Ms. Armstrong, you're referring to tardy sweep? And I will have to get back to you. I'm not familiar with if they are still providing tardy sweep at the sites or not. I need to gather information and get back to you about that.
You know, because I think, you know, think about this, I don't know, it's gonna, I understand why they put the tardy sweep there, and I don't, like I said, I don't know if it's still going on. But if it's still going on and we're really trying to encourage these children, you know, I think sometimes they might like tardy sweep because they get a chance to avoid the classroom. But yeah, maybe that, you know, consider that because we want our, we don't want the absenteeism rate to continue. We want it to improve it. And, I don't know, just look and see what you can do about that.
My understanding is that the tardy sweep is not in effect.
Like I said, Dr. Sue, I'm not quite familiar with that, so I'd have to look into it.
Thank you, Board Member Armstrong. Vice President Stewart?
Just another comment. I'm really glad that in LCAP, we have limited combo classes. I know we have 11 currently, and I know it's like almost impossible to not have them. But I just really am glad that we put an emphasis on the K-6 because I've heard from a lot of teachers, combo classes, especially the 5-6 combos, where they're, you know, working with the sixth-grade students and they're, feel like their fifth-grade students are lacking. So I really hope we look at those K-6 combo classes and try to limit those as much as possible. So I know we wrote that in there and I like that. I just hope it really happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. All right, I have a couple. Just quickly, okay, social media analytics, big surprise, right? Just a couple. So like, there's one goal, like, we have 12 out of 15 that have accounts, and our goal in three years is that all 15 have accounts? That seems more like a do it tomorrow afternoon because it only takes like 10 minutes to make an account. So if that's our goal and that's what we want to happen, I would scratch that as a goal because that could happen in 30 minutes if we really wanted to. Just my thought.
Noted.
Cool. Also, the, I would bring back the Facebook one just because the parents are way more likely to see our stuff on Facebook. Instagram is going to be more student-facing. We should probably have different types of content for our Instagram, social media, talking to our students, building culture, giving them information. And then the Facebook should be more about parent engagement and those things. So I would re-imput that one so we're not just talking to the, just the Instagram audience. Also, the followers, you can get them and you could have a whole bunch, but the engagement's terrible. I would really look at not how many times we post or how many followers, but look at the average, average likes per post and then average shares and engagement every time somebody comments. Because I think with social media, it can just be like a dump of just content that you're putting, and it feels productive, but it's really not. It's all about the conversations that start to happen in the community. So I would look at the engagement analytics, like likes, comments, and shares. So this is more for everyone else. We invest so much time and effort and resource into our special ed programs, but it's, we didn't talk about it much tonight. I know the answer, but can you explain why that is from the LCAP?
So from the perspective of the LCAP, the local control funding formula, the base funds are there, and we do have our students with disabilities in our LCAP. However, a good majority of our funds are increased and improved services, which are predominantly for our unduplicated students, which are English learners, low-income, and foster youth students. So when you see the action, it is highlighting that we are spending our general funds on our special ed students.
And where in here, do we have anything that's targeted towards our adult transition center or those students over there? We don't hear too much about what we're doing specifically for those students who have different sets of needs.
It's not specifically highlighted in the LCAP.
Can we think of something, how we can improve those programs and address them in our LCAP somehow? Also, would transportation be in here? I know we talked about major changes in our transportation over the next year. Would that have to be identified in the LCAP?
It does not need to be identified how you're going to improve it. It is in the LCAP under Goal 1.
Okay.
Under...
Would it be school safety?
So it's on page 12, Goal 1, 4. It's under maintain infrastructure. So that infrastructure includes buildings, transportation, and technology district-wide.
Okay.
And so that, again, is a general fund function and does not necessarily need to be completely delineated out here.
Okay. So in a year from now, when we're talking about making changes, I'm not going to hear, well, it's not in the LCAP, so we can't do it? Not going to hear? Okay.
It is in the LCAP. It's Goal 1, Action 4.
All right, good, good. Also, so declining enrollment's a thing. I know these funds are for servicing the students that we have, but if our budget's tied to this, where would our enrollment campaign and how we're, I'm guessing if our social media's in here, like some type of enrollment campaign? Because if we're not putting dollars behind it, it's going to be hard to actualize really engaging in that.
Well, an enrollment campaign, and please, Ms. Holguin, correct me if I'm wrong, I would think that that would be a general expense, and it would probably be part of that maintaining the infrastructure.
Okay, so that's a cross one.
So you'd have to allocate it within there.
Got it. Let me see, I think, thank you. Vice President Stewart?
Thank you for doing a lot of the work on the social media metrics, obviously. Another thing, just maybe with the board, just discussion, is creating a YouTube page where our board meetings can go on to a YouTube page. I just feel like it's, people are using that more, it's more accessible. I don't know if that's a metric or something that we want to add to that. I would like you to actually talk on that and what you think, please.
I think that's a, I mean, there's no real cost to it, so I don't know if it'd need to be tied in to LCAP because it's free, but to archive board meetings and other promotional videos that we do, I think it's a good practice to have our videos living in the same spot. They are more shareable, there's more accessibility features. I think the system that we are currently using, I mean, I'm happy with it. I think there's a lot of features that I didn't know about. I think it's great, but, you know, backing it up to YouTube, I think is a great way to increase engagement and shareability.
And it doesn't have to have money behind it, right? As long as it's just a piece of the parent engagement? I don't know if that's something, again, that you could look at and maybe get back to us on if you think that would be feasible, good, not good?
We can look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Board members, any other questions on the LCAP? No? Bonnie, and everybody really, thank you so much. You made this so much more easy to digest and able to navigate, the letters, the dabs, everything. Thank you for going the extra effort. Really helps out.
It's a group effort. I'm glad it was understandable.
Thank you. All right, now we are going to move on to our public hearings. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first will be on Agenda 11.1, Appointment of Personnel Commissioner. At this time, I declare the public hearing open. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the board?
Yes, I have a question.
Dr. O'Hussen?
So I didn't understand, do we have a position currently open? Did the person leave on our commission?
If I can speak in here, Dr. O'Hussen, I believe we had a position that was available. No one applied for the position, so the individual continued in the position. But Ms. Holguin, please correct me if that's not accurate.
Yes, we currently had a person in the position whose term expired, so then that term was then brought up to the board in regards to informing them that they can either reappoint and/or appoint a new person for that position.
So the current person who's in the position decided not to continue, is what I'm hearing you say?
She did not officially decide not to continue. She just did not submit an application for this new process because it could have been a reappointment and/or a new appointment, whatever the board decides on that.
So usually, are we going to be interviewing that person? Because I think we did that last time.
Last time, that was the process in regards, and it is a board process. So the board is the one that guides the process in regards to, the Personnel Commission has the obligation and/or we have the obligation to notify you about the position and the term of the position, which is what was provided to the board.
So that we're not making any decision right now, we're just, you're informing us that the position's open and a person has applied, and from there, we would then interview that person to see whether or not we're going to accept them or appoint them in that position, right? Did I understand you correctly?
That is for the board to decide in regards because it is the board appointees' position.
So I can speak on that. This item originally came up in, was it August of last year? Somewhere around there, September? And it was under consent agenda to appoint our board-appointed commissioner. I had that tabled on that, on that meeting because I didn't even know who the appointment was, but apparently we were appointing that person. We advertised the position for Personnel Commissioner. I believe we put it on, it was on Facebook. I don't, it was on the website for, I think, was it 30 days or there was a time period it had to be up? So it was flown on the website, and then we had one applicant, Jason Willie, and tonight we're here to approve that appointment.
So we're not going to go through the interview process, which we've done before? You're bypassing the interview?
Maybe, Council, could you weigh in?
So the requirement to appoint someone to the Personnel Commission is just a matter of notifying the public, which you've done through the public hearing. If the board as a whole decided that they wanted to do an interview process, they can certainly go through that. However, given the timeline of this current appointment, I don't think there would be any time or need since there's only a single applicant. Generally, when there's multiple applicants, you go through an interview process. But yeah, it would be very important to appoint someone because the term of the prior individual on that commission has expired, and they were only eligible to serve for 90 days past that expiration date. We are currently past that, so it would be very important for the board to appoint someone to that commission to allow for the full three-member body to continue the work that they do.
Dr. Sue, do you have another question?
I just feel like I don't know the person. I'd like to talk to them or interview them before I make a decision, or I will say no or abstain.
Ms. Armstrong?
Thank you, President Crichfield. Wow, this, I feel like, I don't know either. I remember getting something back in January, the reappointment, we were supposed to reappoint the Personnel Commissioner. It was like in a memo.
I think it was a choice, we could reappoint or we could fly it.
Yeah. And it said at a future board meeting, but I haven't heard anything after that. So the thing is, I don't even know, did the lady put in a resignation? Or did she just not apply?
So it wouldn't be a resignation, her term expired in December of last year. So it would either have been a reappointment of that individual or opening up the position for new applicants, which she could reapply if she had chosen to.
So the position was open? And we interviewed this person?
I'm not sure if any interviews were done per, you know, individual board members, but as a but as an entire board, there was no interview done of the actual individual. He was just the only applicant.
Just the only applicant. But even if there... Even if it was just one applicant, wouldn't we have to do our due diligence in interviewing the person that we're getting ready to put in the Personnel Commission role?
So that's certainly something the board could do, but there's no legal requirement that they be interviewed.
So just by default, this person put in the application, and now they're going to be appointed?
So the only thing that the board has to do is to notify the public of the individual that they will be appointing, which is why the public hearing was conducted. The vote for the individual to be appointed is actually on your consent calendar.
If I can, I believe the board by law is recommended by the superintendent, appointed by the president, and voted on by the board.
That's the board bylaw. ED Code simply states that you just have to notify the public, and then a board has to vote on the appointment.
And if I can give some context to why that... Why we didn't... Why we tabled it originally was I had never... The person that was on the consent agenda to approve, I had never met. I didn't know. And when I spoke with our former superintendent, he said he had no idea who they were. So they begged the question of, "How are you recommending somebody for me to appoint if no one's ever met?" So I understand what you're saying. I believe if there were more than one applicant, I think we would move to a interview process. We flew it for the appropriate amount of time to spend the one applicant, so I'm comfortable with it. Dr. Sue?
So you've met this person? You've talked to them? Has anybody... Does anybody on this board know this person?
Well, in our Friday memo, there was the whole resume. I don't know if you guys read it. Okay.
A resume doesn't really speak for what the person is about and his mission and what...
Agree, but there was only one applicant.
Well, since we interviewed the last person, I thought we should still go through the same formal process. But it's your call.
Thank you, Dr. Hessen. Ms. Armstrong?
I just wish I had known. Blindsided again. I mean, honestly, I just wish I had known. That's all. I mean, I just wish I had known. I didn't know. And it seems like if you knew, I should have known. Amy, did you know?
I think we all knew because it was on our Friday memo with his resume, that it was on this agenda, so I think we all were told about it.
I know, but we... Okay, so we're just gonna... Just because he's the only person, by default, he's going to be appointed?
So we've... There's a mandatory time that you have to fly that opening. So we put it on the website. It's been open. When we tabled the original appointment back in, I think, January, it's been a while, this has been a conversation, an ongoing conversation about the Personnel Commission. I've actually brought it up a few times at board, asking questions about it. So that's... I would hope the entire board would be engaged and understand that we were pursuing that. Ms. Garza?
Thank you, President Cretchfield. I also want to kind of point something out that when we got it in our Friday memo, that was actually the appropriate time to ask some more questions, perhaps, and get a clear understanding of why that application was in our memo. And I agree with President Cretchfield, there is a timeline here. We kind of have to appoint someone. No questions were asked at the time, or... I mean, Ms. Sasevato, did anyone else ask questions when that was presented to us at the... As a Friday memo attachment?
I did not receive any questions on that particular item.
So I'm assuming that that's... You know, if no one asked, then we move forward.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
I thought this is the time to ask the questions.
What was that?
That's what I thought.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I was under the assumption that during the topic, when it comes up on the agenda, that it's the time we can ask questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So no more questions? Okay. All right, now moving on to our second public hearing for Item 11.2, Resolution and MAP Adoption. Mr. Douglas of NDC... Douglas Johnson of NDC will come up to present the information to the board and community. Welcome, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for your patience. Glad you're here.
Do we do public hearing first?
We will do the public hearing after the presentation.
Yes. So, good evening. It's my pleasure to be here with you. Justin Levitt sends his regrets. He got through one medical thing, went to the eye doctor for a routine checkup, and they said your retina is detached. So he is back into surgery yesterday. So his apologies for not being here again, but I'm Doug Johnson. I'm president of NDC. I actually, long ago, guided the city through its move to district elections, which I will say, your students participate in that process very eloquently and actively, so I was happy to see them speaking today and to see they're still just as eloquent and excellent public speakers as they were back then. So this has been a process... Oh, I forgot to give them... As you're all aware, but some in the audience may not have followed all of this, this has been an extensive process. This is the fifth hearing. You had the initial two hearings to inform and educate the public and gather public input back in April. Draft maps were released. Then there were two more hearings, April 25th and May 9th, where we had draft maps. And we talked about the draft maps, got public input on them, got board direction on them. And so we took that input, have a large set of maps before you this evening. These have all been on the district's website for a full week. So there are both the PDF maps that people can print out with the statistics, and there's the interactive map where people can zoom in and out on these different maps. So today is what's scheduled to be the map adoption hearing, following public comments. And this is an unusual issue in that the board's vote is not the final vote. After the board chooses its preferred map, then what's called the County Committee on School District Organization holds a hearing, and they actually, under state law, have the final say on which map is... On approving the process to change and on which map is adopted. There we go. So in terms of the rules and requirements for these maps, we have first the federal laws. We must have almost perfectly equal population. There's a couple of percentage plus or minus allowed from perfect, perfectly ideal populations in each trustee area. We have to be sure we comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, and we have to avoid racial gary-mandering. So that boils down to race cannot be the predominant reason a district is drawn the way it is or why a map is adopted. So those are pretty big-picture requirements. One that really comes down to numbers is the equal population requirement. And I'll talk about the different maps. There is one proposed map in the packet that is not population balanced. Then California, starting January 1st, has applied what's called the Fair Maps Act to schools. So the ones in the middle are fairly new for school districts. They are in prioritized order. The trustee areas have to be contiguous, so no jumping from one part of the district to another. We have to avoid division of neighborhoods and what the law defines as communities of Third is we have to avoid divisions of cities and census-designated places, which you've talked about at your previous hearings quite a bit. Fourth, in this prioritized order, is following easily identifiable boundaries. So the railroad, the freeway, major roads all fall in that category. And then fifth, the last of the requirements from the state is compact. So say, don't bypass one group of people to get to another group of people. There's also a state prohibition you see in the top right. We cannot adopt district boundaries for the purpose of favoring or discriminating against an incumbent, a political candidate, or a political party. So we have to base our decisions on the criteria, not on where any one person lives. Then if you have two maps that are equal on all those considerations, that rarely happens, but if there are two maps that you consider equal on all those considerations, then we can look at underpopulating a seat that you know is going to grow faster than others. Not a big issue here. We don't have an exploding population part of the district, but that is the last of what the courts have recognized as criteria and goals. So I do want to mention the draft maps. I'm going to go through... They're obviously small in a PowerPoint presentation. They are available on the website, and there has been on the website the Interactive Review map where you can put in an address, zoom into that area, and really see the maps in detail. So first of all, is Map 108. Just putting it up front, just to acknowledge, we do appreciate a number of these maps came from residents, which is great to see. We're glad to see the community engage. This one is not quite population balanced. It's 11% between the largest and smallest, and the most that's allowed is 10%, unfortunately. But you can... And this general outline of districts you'll see show up in some of the other maps. So the ideas in this, I think, are somewhat captured in other maps. So, sorry for the... When these slides get projected, they get a little elongated, so sorry for the funny-looking maps. First of all, we have two maps, 101 and 102, that really split the city into roughly... The Bellflower part of this into east and west portions. 101 largely follows the school attendance areas, so that the blue part of Area 2 coming down into the middle of the city, that's following your attendance zones for your elementary schools. So while it looks a little unusual, it is following what you could consider a community of interest, if that's the map you wish to adopt. 102 is more focused on major roads. So it doesn't have that railroad line that you see in 101 coming through the middle as a boundary. It's much more focused on large roads as the boundaries. And both of these maps, you can see Lakewood is all one trustee area. It happens to be the right population to be a trustee area down there. And Cerritos is, of course, always intact in all these maps. 103 and 113 are similar maps to each other. They have... Instead of being split east and west, they have a northern trustee area, too. In 103, it's actually following the city council-district boundary. So the line in 103 where it comes up to the northeast looks a little funny, but it will actually be familiar to those voters because it's following the city council-district boundary. Of course, as you know, the city extends farther north, which is how it ended up with that somewhat unusual border. So that shape and that collection communities is taken... Is brought over from the city council map. 113 is very similar, but it has a much more compact and much more major road-oriented border for trustee area 2. And then 106 and 107 are very similar to 113 I just showed you. They differ a little bit. If you looked right where the... Where the name... What is that saying in there? It's hard to read on the screen. Right in the middle of the map, there's a little bit that switches where it says Bellflower. And you can't really read it on the screen, but the letters in the middle there say Bellflower. That has switched from 113. It was in Area 2, and now it's in Area 1 in Map 106. 107 has some other changes. You can see farther south, south of the railroad, the boundary between 3 and 4. Instead of being kind of a continuous north-south boundary, it follows more major roads as it curves around there. Then there are a separate set of maps, as has been discussed before, that divide Lakewood. And again, I mentioned that in the state criteria, we do have the criteria to minimize the splits of cities and census-designing places. But we do... These maps are in the packet, and so I did want to go through them. We have 104, which kind of has that northern district roughly following... That's the adjusted version of following the city council district. 105, actually, is two seats in the northeast that go all the way up to the north. Both of these, the comments from the resident who drew them was mainly focused on their interest in district or trustee area 4. I think the rest of it was kind of drawn to match other maps. But that was the main goal expressed by the resident who drew these, was to get that shape of trustee area 4. Then we have 109 and 110, really just a 50-50 split of Lakewood down in the south, and then coming north with east and west maps. 110 is... We do have some compactness concerns with it. You can see where Areas 3 and Areas 2 come together. I think there were population balancing, and so they're kind of picking blocks based on the population number, and you ended up with a definitely bypassing one population to another, which is the lowest of the criterion in the priority order, but it is a concern in that map in particular. And then we have three new maps that came in since your last meeting, Maps 111, 112, and 114. They get numbered in the order that we processed them, is the reason for the skipping numbers. 113 was earlier. But you can see, these are similar to that Map 108, but these three are population balanced, where you have that large trustee area 3 in the middle. And then Lakewood divided 50-50. And then each one varies in the north where the boundaries between 1 and 2 run. So that's our quick spin through this. I'm happy to talk about the data or the maps. I do have the interactive map here on my tablet, so I can zoom in if you have specific street-by-street questions. And of course, there is a public hearing, so we do want to take public comment, too. So I'm happy to answer your question now or after public comment.
Thank you. After, it'd be great. Thank you. At this time, I declare the public hearing open. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
Hi there, you guys. Thank you so much. Couple things about this process. I first of all, really want to thank you so much for being productive and moving so quickly to make sure that we avoid litigation, looking at those other numbers in other districts. It seems like a very wise decision that you guys are making. So thank you for being productive with this process to ensure equity so that all of our stakeholders are well represented. Spent some time looking at the maps. So after looking at the release maps, Map 113 overwhelmingly meets the required state criteria in addition to meeting all federal criteria. All of the presented maps meet criteria number one. So criteria number two is to avoid the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. After doing some research, I found that the Egyptian community is growing in the city of Bellflower. It has the sixth highest percentage of Egyptian residents in the state, and it is continuing to grow. District 1 does a good job of keeping the St. George Coptic Church community together. Criteria number three avoids the division of cities, keeping Lakewood together in District 5, and includes all of Cerritos in District Number 4. Criteria number four is easily identifiable boundary lines. The map boundary lines are along main city streets, including the railroad tracks, and are very easy to identify. For criteria number five, this is the most compact maps, meeting all the other requirements mentioned earlier. Some data points that I looked at. The population numbers are very well spread out in Map Number 113, as are the voter registration numbers. The numbers show that the percent deviation of all the district is only at 6.53% on this map. Additionally, our Asian and Pacific Islanders are very closely represented in all districts. So looking at the total number of students in Bellflower Unified School District, we have identified as... Our identified population of Hispanic is 68%. Three of the districts on Map Number 113 are approximately 60% Hispanic. The total number of black students in the district is 13%. With Map Number 113, three of our districts have a black population of 14% or more. So Map 113 seems to reflect our school population very closely and ensures that all of our stakeholders are well represented while meeting all the state and federal criteria wherever possible. You can't make numbers that don't fit in certain communities, so I just want to say that was the research that I found, and I hope this helps with your map discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? At this time, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the board? Vice President Stewart?
Okay, I spent a lot of time on these maps, to the point where I was literally driving around Bellflower at 9 o'clock at night, looking at different areas. So I've written out my comments, so I'm going to just read this. So in reviewing the maps, obviously, Map 108, it's not population balanced. Maps 104, 105, 109, 110, 111, 112, and 114 split Lakewood, and I obviously don't believe with that or agree with that, and neither... or agree with that, and neither, it doesn't follow the state criteria. Splitting Lakewood could have three cities in one district, the socio-economic geographic areas are not kept together, if they had candidates that were living in that Bellflower portion, they could actually have zero representation, and these boundaries do not determine how the board governs. The school board should still work together to benefit the district as a whole, rather than the interest of a single area, so I would not choose those maps. Maps 101 and 102 are east-to-west maps, and with Lakewood being a south region, it just doesn't make sense to split the other regions east-to-west, and historically, in past practices in our district, we've identified ourselves as a north-south district, we have back-to-school night south, back-to-school night north, we have open house south, and open house north, so I believe it would be best to continue a north-south formation. Map 103, this map, it crosses Flora Vista, which I believe is a distinct community, just living here my whole life, those railroad tracks are just really important down the middle, and crossing over, I think, are just different communities of interest. Cerritos does not have the same demographics and interest as the Flora Vista area near Eucalyptus and Cornuda, they're just different demographics, and just this map is also not as compact, and the borders are not as easily identified. Maps 106 and 107, I could accept these, but I feel like the triangle that crosses Bellflower Boulevard is also just a different community of interest, and it crosses over the Bellflower Boulevard, whereas I think map 113, that would be my choice, because it doesn't. So speaking on map 113, I think, you know, following the criteria, the map is contiguous, the socio-economic geographic areas are kept together, I think this map best divides the communities of interest, District 1, 3, and 4 are primarily renters, at 69%, 69%, and 66%. Districts 2 and 5 are primarily owners, at 56% and 82%. It separates the Flora Vista and the Pacific, where the railroad tracks, and I just again, think that's a natural boundary, a natural neighborhood dividing line. It sticks to major streets, it goes to Flora Vista, Langer, Bellflower Boulevard, Ardmore, which also has lights, Somerset, McNabb, and Rose Crowns, and I know that the schools cannot be a predominant consideration, but it just kind of happens organically in this map. District 1 has two schools, District 3 has, or District 2 has three schools, District, I'm sorry, District 1 has two schools, District 2 has three schools, District 3 also has two schools, District 4 has two schools, and District 5 has five schools, but again, that's just keeping Lakewood together. I think the map has easily identifiable boundaries, again, going north and south, and as I spoke to that with community members, again, they felt like north and south, we've been doing that, and it would just make sense to continue doing it, and I think, again, it's more compact and has cleaner boundaries than any of the other maps. So I would want to approve 113.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Dr. Alhessen?
Thank you. I also heard from community members, looking at wanting to have more than one representation from Lakewood. So I was looking at, I think it was map 11, 111, seems that there are clear boundaries, there's no, like other ones had, seemed like it was splitting neighborhoods, but I could be wrong, I have to ask the, so 114, 112, 110, and 109, all looked like it had separated some neighborhoods, and I didn't understand that. So I was looking at map 111 as far as equal representation, and also allowing more than one representative from Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alhessen. Vice President Stewart?
Again, just to have a conversation, map 111, if you look at those borders, they're all over the place, they go east to west, we've already been told that the city of Lakewood should really be kept together, especially considering the socio-demographic parts of that, and again, I understand that Lakewood is very involved, and that they want representation, but again, if you look at that map, I don't know if you guys can put 111 up for me, please? If you look at that map, if you had someone that lived in that Bellflower section, there could actually be zero people that live in Lakewood, so I don't know how great that representation would be, if nobody lived in Lakewood, so I would just favor keeping Lakewood together on its own.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Dr. Alhessen?
Is Board Member Stewart, that you said we'd no representation of Bellflower?
I don't know if I can stand up, but if someone ran right here, right here, and right here, they would not live in Lakewood. So if someone ran in those two areas, they would not live in Lakewood, but they could be elected. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Any other questions? We are going to move on to major action, so there'll be another chance to speak on this as well. What I'd like to say is, I agree with Vice President Stewart, I think, one thing that hasn't been talked about too much is our Cerritos population, I don't want to leave them out of the conversation, but I do think it's really important, and I've seen it happen in cities and other districts. Districting can have a negative effect on a district, if you're not all working together, and if you're not being student-first and working as a team. Where you get elected and where you serve are two totally different things. If you get elected in District 5, you're still just as responsible to the students and the staff across the district, and I'll say right now, we have to keep that in mind going forward, no matter what map we pick. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Board President. I do have a question for the consultant. So you explained that map 108 is not population balanced, so, or is the board able to just withdraw that map, or do we have to vote on it as well, what options are there?
The only thing that matters is the map you select, so you don't have to take action on the others, you just have to pick the one you like.
All right, so now we will move on to our major action. We have one major action item this evening, and that is item 12.1, final map selection and election sequence. Do we have any comments or questions from the board? Any additional comments or questions? No? Would somebody like to make a motion for a map?
I make a motion to approve map 113. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen? Mrs. Garza?
I do have a question, I'm sorry. Do we have to identify also the election cycle in that motion?
No, the, Andrew?
Or will that be a separate?
That's actually a decision of the county committee, so.
Okay.
So we're good.
Thank you. Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye. The motion passes to adopt map 113. We are now moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a, do I have any items to withhold for the consent agenda this evening?
President Crichfield, I'd like to hold 13.7, please.
Any other questions for withhold? No? All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and withhold items 13.7, amendments to annual contracts?
Yeah, you have that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye. The first item withheld is item 13.7, the amendments to the annual contracts. Any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I had a question. I know it says here that the amount that is made is $35 to $125 per hour, and then in the services is nursing, healthcare services, $125 an hour, who makes that much, just out of curiosity, and why? I'm going to ask Ms. Holgiin if she can clarify that particular question?
Yes, so those prices are set by the agency of maximum healthcare, and as you stated, Ms. Stewart, there, there is different services that they're providing, so nursing services, and that may be the cost of what they charge, since these are contracted services.
So, nursing could possibly make $125 an hour, where would those nurses be located?
So, they would provide services to the district throughout.
So they would be just agencies that work with the district?
Correct.
Does that seem like a lot to you guys, $125 an hour?
Contracted services can be costly, because it's pretty much a supply and demand situation, so you do get that, those costs at times, because the supply is limited, and it does require a special certificated credential or training for some of these, from some of these individuals.
So in the past, what have some of these nurses that make this much, what have they provided for us, just some random examples from the past?
So for example, are, they may help with anything with our special ed students, where there's some health services that are needed, or some assessments that may need to take place, so they may assist on that, they may also attend IEPs with students who have health needs, to provide some input.
So again, attending an IEP with some students that need it, they could still make possibly $125 an hour?
These are the prices that are set by the agencies.
And have we looked at other agencies, are they, is this comparable to other agencies?
We do, the thing with nursing is that it is very difficult to find nurses that are credentialed to actually be able to work with students. So you have your regular nurses, but then there's a special credential that your actual nurses that work with students have to have, and it's very, very difficult to find individuals that actually have a nursing credential, allowing them to work with students.
Okay, it just seems like such a lot, maybe I should switch professions.
Can I add that it's also our speech therapists, it's also our OTs, it's the whole gamut, our psychologists, behavioral specialists, so, not just nursing, I just want to make sure you're aware.
And I know it's super important, I don't mean to make jokes and make light of how important it is, but it's $125 an hour, just seems like a lot, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart, and I think that speaks to a bigger issue of our, how much we're contracting out for things in general, I know that Laco has a, their 22, 23 annual report, and it shows how much we're spending on contracted services, I know that's been an issue that's popped up here and there, so maybe that's something that can be addressed at some point, to make sure that we're able to provide services and not spending too much on these individual contracts. Any other questions from the board on that item? No? All right, do I have a motion to approve item 13.7?
You have that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye. All right, next we'll move on to board communications, it is now time for, well, board communications. I will go ahead and start with Board Member Armstrong.
All right, I had, I had some notes written, but I don't know what I did with them, so I'm just going to my calendar. Not too much, though. Anyway, what have I been doing? I tell you, I can't, I can't remember what I, what I've done, I must use the calendar. Okay, so I did go, okay, I, I went to the ribbon cutting at the, at Bellflower High School, we, Bellflower High School has a new weight room, I think I'm going to start going, working out, unless I have to pay, pay for the weight room, you know, I don't know. But anyway, the weight room is really, really nice, and the kids are excited, it was really nice, it's really nice. I don't know, y'all, can I go work out in that weight room? I don't know. Anyway, I'm sure the kids will enjoy it, brand-new equipment, nice painting, and, oh my goodness, anyway. And then, and then I went to the Mayfair High School Scholarship and Academic Awards, and I tell you, they had a slew of students, I mean, our students are really performing, you know, so thanks to our teachers, and you know, like, we did see students come up today that are thriving in their profession, and they're alumnis of Bellflower, so I can just imagine these children, you know, being able to come back and give back, because we did have some scholarship donors who came back and gave back to their, to their alma mater. I also went to, I went to my own child's graduation, she was a graduate of Bellflower High School, and she just graduated, she is now a practicing respiratory therapist, so she's a practitioner now, and already got a job, so yay. Thanks to Bellflower educating her. And then I also went to the Bellflower Senior Academic and Scholarship Award Ceremony, and there they had, the gym was really nicely decorated, it was full, lots of, the kids are really striving, I mean, we had kids that almost got every award that was, that was given, it's like, do they have a life outside of school? They do, and that's what gets them these scholarships. And again, the community partners that donated these scholarships, I thank them, and I just like to see our students thrive, and that's, that's about it. I'm at the board meeting tonight, and I thank you guys for being here, so thank you guys for your time and being here, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Dr. Alhessen?
Thank you. Well, I had a busy time in between recuperating from whatever I had, I don't know what I had, but anyway, I'm happy to be here now, and sometimes you have to have some contrast in your life, to really appreciate where you are, and the universe has blessed me with a lot of contrast. Anyway, I want to share that I attended the Ed-Hoc Committee for Special Ed with my board colleague, Amy Stewart, and it was a pretty big meeting, I was surprised, all those who attended, but I think it was a great start. I do want to share that I'm hoping this committee would be an outcome-based committee, and not just a committee that talks about things, I want to make sure that we move forward on specific things that we need to address with our special ed population, our special ed teachers, staff, and aides. I also spoke at Career Day at Washington Elementary, and I realize I have a new skill of killing spiders. I was, I was in the class, the third-day class, and a spider started coming down, and of course, you know, the kids, they went hysterical, all ran to the back of the classroom screaming, but so did the teacher. And I was left out front thinking, okay, I guess I better take action here, so I was looking in my scooter basket, what I could kill it with, because it's really a nasty, thick, big, black spider with three white dots on the back, and the kids were carrying on and screaming, so the teacher wanted to give me her shoe, and the student goes, no, take mine. So the student gave me his shoe, and I ended up killing the spider. And what I told the kids, I said to them, see, just because someone's disabled, doesn't mean you can't kill a spider. And so it was good, I got good questions from the students, the one I loved best was, which job did you love the best? And I told them the one I'm doing now, and so they all, you know, started clapping, and they were happy to do that, and I was happy to speak at three different sessions, so I was tired at the end of my talking at that time, especially killing spiders, which I don't like myself, but the teacher was allergic to spiders, so I understood her, her situation. I want to do a shout-out to Classified Appreciation Week, I, classified staff, I personally know many of you, and I shout out to you, and thank you for all your personal help. I personally know many of you, and I shout out to you and thank you for all your personal help for me. And, um, it always means a lot. And I also want to recognize our Staff Employee of the Year, Kim Malott, from Mayfair High School for her hard work and dedication. Um, I hear a lot of good things from her, about her from teachers. And lastly, I want to talk about, um, really moving forward with looking and being more proactive with our cell phone policy. Even as I'm reading on CSBA, it's a great urgency in regards to, um, having students focused in their classroom. And there's been such great data showing the positive effects of that for teachers and for students. Um, so I really like for us to, as a board and as, um, administration staff, to really look at that and see what we can do to be more proactive in, um, addressing that need. And also AI, I'd like for us to be in the forefront versus being reactive, more proactive, um, avoiding issues, giving parameters for teachers. Um, it's really, really bad at the university and college level. Students are using total AI to do their papers. Um, I'll give you just a quick example. My niece is working at Cal State Fullerton in the Child Development Center, and she was sitting at her desk and a student was finishing her paper, and it was through AI. And the, my, my niece, who's an English major, said, do you know your paper has a lot of errors? And she says, yeah, it's okay, it's AI, it'll correct. And then, um, she told her, yeah, but don't you want to proof it yourself? And the attitude, um, that my niece was sharing with me was like there was no ownership to the work. And that's really sad, because when you start to work in an industry, whatever it may be, you're asked to do a report. You're always going to rely on AI versus looking at cognitive processing and, um, actually problem solving, critical thinking skills. Anyway, so I'd like for us to look at that. I, there's lots of resources out there, and I don't want our, our students thinking that that's a, a free ticket through education and not really accessing their own brain power. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. Board Clerk Myra Garza?
Thank you, President Crichfield. Um, I also attended, uh, the ribbon cutting at Bellflower High School. Thank you to, um, Mr. Eckler and his foundation for being so generous and, um, helping us to provide a better facility for Bellflower High School students. Um, also attended the, um, Mayfair High School Senior Scholarship Reception. Um, I wasn't able to stick around for the awards night. Um, I had to duck out a little bit early, but I'm very, very, um, happy that we have so many students who are able to, um, receive, uh, funds going forward as they are, um, starting their, or continuing their educational journey and, uh, for your universities or colleges. Um, also, uh, let's see, the classified employees, uh, you know, happy, um, Classified Employees Week. As an educator myself, I can tell you that I experienced firsthand your, the benefits of your labor. Thank you very much. It is, um, you support us as teachers, um, but you don't just support our, uh, ourselves, but our kids as well. Sometimes I see custodians or our recades, um, come and talk to kids who have issues, you know, and where we can't necessarily make sometimes a connection with the student that we is not in our classroom. You guys are able to make those bridges for us. So very, very much appreciate what you do for us and how you do it. It, it's an art, it's a skill, and you really have a passion for it, and it shows in our kids. Also wanted to say, um, that I'm very, I'm looking forward to all of our graduations. Uh, congratulations, seniors, class, um, graduating seniors of twenty twenty-four. Um, this is the culmination of all your struggles and, you know, um, sleepless nights for some of you. Um, you know, it is the continuation also of your academic journey. And we know that there were many people who had, you know, us, us to support you along the way, uh, teachers, parents. So this is a happy time for us. This is actually my person, um, personally my favorite time of the year, because we get to see how we have been able to educate you and give you the best of what we, um, have and send you out there into the world. So congratulations, and we are looking forward to many, um, accomplishments from you. And also enjoy the three-day weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Vice President Stewart?
Good evening. Um, first again, I would like to agree with my colleagues in saying, um, we're very thankful for our classified employees. Michelle, you do an amazing job with, um, being president and taking that on. And I know you have to represent a lot of different people and go through a lot of different situations, but we thank you and all of your employees for everything that you do. Um, secondly, I definitely agree with Dr. O'Hesson. Um, I hope that this ad hoc meeting and committee can find solutions and that we can look and talk about that and how the FICMAT and, you know, how we can, uh, fix things that are in there with, um, collaboration. So I agree with her on that one. Um, next, just, I, I think I've talked about a lot, being on this board, is just my wishes to have a family-oriented Bellflower Unified School District. And I've seen some things lately, I'll be honest, that just disappoint me. I don't think that some of our employees have been treated the way that they should be treated. And I just want to implore everyone to stay positive, be kind, and really think about the decisions you make, because, um, some of these decisions affect our community. And so I just, again, I want to build this family atmosphere, so I'm hopeful that, um, we can work together to, again, be kind to each other. And I'll just leave it at that. And then last, um, on May tenth, I did a walk-through of the Bellflower High School weight room. I couldn't make the ribbon cutting, um, I had another event that I had to attend, but I'm just very thankful of Austin Eckler and that foundation. We talked about this before, and I know I've talked about this on the dais, is just the teamwork and, um, what was put into that. Uh, when I became a board member, I just had a lot of parents and a lot of, uh, coaches, uh, working with the football coaches at the time at Bellflower, and just their desire to have a better weight room, and how long it had been since it had been, you know, redone, and the safety concerns that some of the parents had. And so we already knew that needed to be fixed. And then we talked about the foundation, and then I'm researching, you know, on the foundation, which never would have happened if it wasn't us creating a foundation. And, you know, I found the Austin Eckler Foundation. And then, um, that's one thing I'm very thankful from past superintendent, Dr. Jodi, is he reached out to them. He knew someone there and he made it happen. So it was just a complete teamwork of all of us working together. I know Brad knows it was kind of my baby. It was one of the very first things when I got on this board that I wanted to accomplish as a board and, you know, do for our student athletes and our parents. So I'm just really excited for our students. Um, I'm sad I wasn't able to attend, but, um, thank you for the, my colleagues for attending. And I'm just really excited that those student athletes are going to be able to use that weight room. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Uh, for me, I, I mean, a lot of the, the same events, right? It's been really busy. I love this time of year. Um, I know it's, it's a lot harder for other people. I get to show up and just give speeches and do that, even though the last speech, was it last night? I brought Tori, and I think she was my biggest heckler in the, in the crowd. She's like, daddy, it's too long. I'm like, she wasn't wrong, but it's great, like, getting to go, she was not wrong. Uh, but it's great to go to these events and just be around, uh, what all this is for. Right, all of the, the late meetings, all of the studying our board books, the, you know, all, all the phone calls and to see what it's all for makes all of it worth it. And I absolutely love that I get to serve here, and I love that I get to serve with all of you on the board. And thank you again, Bonnie. Killed it on the, on the presentation today, made it really easy. I appreciate it. And thank you, staff, for all the extra work you've been doing. I know we've been cranking, you know, it's going to be a busy month. Um, I, a couple of things that haven't been mentioned, uh, there was the, um, so that was mentioned, though, okay. I went to a lot. Uh, shout out to Eckler Foundation, mentioned that. Um, Bellflower, uh, Senior Awards Night, oh, the ATC culmination celebration, that was awesome. Um, I, I absolutely loved my time there. And then while I was there, they invited me to a softball game that they had today, and I went and played some softball with them, and that was a lot of fun. They, all, all four classes walked down to Mayfair Park, and we, uh, we hit some balls. It was a good time to be had. Uh, also the Lakewood Rotary Scholarships Award. Uh, Lakewood Rotary, uh, gave our students some scholarships and acknowledged one of our teachers, and just want to say thank you to them. Um, appreciate the support and the partnership. I also met with, oh, you. Uh, I also met with, uh, CSEA and BTA leadership, uh, so thank you, uh, Michelle and Carrie for your, uh, ongoing, uh, partnership. Um, I, I'll end with just echoing with, uh, Vice President, uh, Stewart said. Um, building a positive culture in our district, uh, starts here, uh, but it, it's created, uh, on, on, at the site, right? So, um, we have to be, uh, not positive just to be positive, but really celebrate ourselves, fix the issues, address things head-on, and make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our students every single time we come into this room and every time we go to, uh, we get on campus, right? Uh, with that, I will go ahead and get you guys out of here. If there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-two PM until the special board meeting to be held Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.